Hello?
Yeah, yeah. We've got a light on here.
Okay, we're here to talk about the Mountainside Hospital Redevelopment Plan and go over the edits that have been made since the last joint meeting a couple of weeks ago, the marathon meeting that we had in Montclair. I think the best way to do that would be go over point by point, going through the bound copy, red line copy that we received from Mike C. Kelly. Before we get started, does anybody have any general? Anybody on the board with a general question, comment? Everybody got the red line copy? That, okay, the new copies that are here are some extra edits that were done since yesterday. They're relatively minor and we can try and piece them in as we go through. And I think we need to hit all of the red line edits in the bound book. And I'll just ask the board for comments as we go along.
Chair, before we go on page three, is Ruby Sealer still a member or that needs to be moved forward?
I'm sorry, here.
So Ruby Sealer?
Yes. She should be, correct. She's dying during the process. Ruby was a member at the beginning of the process and she's dying during, but she will.
Okay. All right, so going through, does anybody have any questions or comments on the edits on page 10, the red line items? If not, I find the next section, 2.21 is the edit on the separate page. 2.2.1, which is on page 13. You see the edit here says, "In red, could make leasing office space at the site unaffordable to the provisions."
This is actually the last full paragraph. It's in the middle of page 14.
Page 14, okay. Ah, I see. Does anybody have any issue with that change?
I think that's a good change. Reads better.
Okay. Section 3.0, page 19, there's a highlighted area there that I believe was, you know, I'm going to stop at some of these because we did not all have the same copy that we were looking at at the last meeting. Anyone have any issue with the fifth bullet point?
Chair, where are we?
Page 19, the highlighted bullet point. Okay, and then the next page, 20. This was from the last meeting also. Everybody's good with that? Page 21, these edits were also from the last meeting and I don't believe anybody had any discussion on that. So going now to, next to page 23, they did make the change, I believe it was Robbie who made a comment about principal versus permitted uses. They've added, you're good with that? In section 4.3.2? And 4.3.4, okay, see, they took out the whole timing for times of treatments, which I believe has been moved to a different sec, right, which is in a different section later on? Next section, 4.3.5, section 24.
Can I just ask back to 4.3.3?
Sure.
It got changed to say underground parking.
Correct.
Right.
I still remember.
That was from last time.
This came from public comments.
I'm sorry.
This came from the public hearings where the residents on Wall and Crescent requested that any, on lot A, if any parking structure is permitted, it would be underground and it wouldn't be above ground structure. So this was.
Oh, this is just A.
This is responding to public comments at the public hearings.
Just loving it. Okay, thanks.
Next page, 4.3.5. I have a question in the rooftop equipment area. Says provided, the last section of the rooftop equipment has provided the height of the roof structure equipment does not exceed 10 feet. Does that include the screening that's on the equipment? And if not, I think it should, the screening should be no, the equipment and screening should be no more than 10 feet.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I, and this is, you have the same statement, I think, in another part of the plan.
Chair, no more? Can you turn up the age for a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. It's right in the middle. No.
Thank you.
I think it's mostly that.
Everybody here now? A little bit, a little bit better?
It's better.
Okay. So did everybody heard that last comment about adding the screening to the height of the roof equipment?
The screen will be part of the total height.
The 10, 10 feet, the screen.
Exclusive, yes.
So the screening can't be over 10 feet.
We just want to add our roof structure equipment including.
Including screening. Okay.
I have.
Next section.
I just want to point out that on the bottom of page 25 now, from a residential property line, the minimum landscape buffer and parking setback, the developer requested here that from a residential property line, we add an asterisk and then in, underneath that, put, "In the case where an adjacent property is benefited by an exclusive easement located on any portion of the area A MLB site, the minimum setbacks or required buffer shall be measured from the edge of the easement rather than the lot line." And this has to do with the fact that on the MLB site, there is an approachment of one of the adjacent residential properties and they're looking to have the setback buffer measured from the point of that approachment rather than the point of the actual lot line. So we've added just an asterisk to that in that notation.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Comments?
Is that standard practice? It's a unique situation where.
Unique, yeah.
An adjacent homeowner is utilizing about 30 feet of the hospital property and has some, basically they tell where a fence line was, was the property line, so they encroach on that property, putting structures on that property site, leave the hospital and that homeowner have agreed, they have an agreement for them to utilize that land as long as 30 occupants of that residence. So basically, it's a situation we're working out with a adjacent homeowner who's thought 30 feet of the hospital property was their property.
So they use that as the buffer then, and the line would be?
Well, actually, it increases, it goes from the end of the easement rather than the lot line. It actually depends on that landowner.
Right, okay.
Is that only for the, did you say that's only for as long as the homeowner?
Correct, because right now they're encroaching on hospital property.
So the easement will just formalize this?
And that's the only property that's subject to this condition?
That's correct. It's one property on rental terrace.
Is it worth being more specific in the description here rather than generically to the extent there's an easement, blah, blah, blah?
If there were another easement issue to be uncovered in any sort of title or survey search, just to discover that.
All right.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next comment on page 27, 4.3.9 covers the hours of operation, which were deleted from the other section. Okay, next, next page, page 28, 4.4.2. So this is the, the area we talked about last time. We went back and forth with Montclair about removing the, the other permitted uses and the, the parking area, what's currently the parking area.
So since our last meeting, what I changed is separated the uses by block. That's why they're in a loop, because that's since the last meeting. So now I have uses permitted just on the blocks that are directly across from the hospital structure and then uses permitted on Montclair block that is, and the Glenridge blocks that currently contain the parking structure.
Do we have, you don't have a diagram?
We do have, it's by zoning map.
So should we start the discussion here?
Yeah, please.
It was my sense coming out of that meeting that there was a fairly strong sentiment that that should be limited, that we should go back to the prior version, which limited it to essentially parking.
Yeah. I may note, basically, Montclair did stay at those uses we had in our zoning code, currently under our zoning code, medical office building is permitted, but opposed of, I think, eight or nine accessory uses. However, I think in our zoning, if you look at our, we had always projected the master plan, that the building would be on this particular block. On north of Bay Avenue, medical office building was prohibited. So we seem to just switch the locations of the building. So I think that going to what I recall, we would drop uses permitted in area A, disco with parking garage, service park in our outdoor plaza, and then that would entail dropping all the building standards that follow that section.
So is our board, our board is recommending that if everybody's in agreement that we're going to drop that uses permitted in area A?
And that would entail dropping the, on the building regulations?
No, because structured parking.
Structured parking is stolen.
So whether to expand the garage.
Right.
Right, and so, I mean, just think about it this way. You can have the parking garage, you know, expanded, you know, for additional uses, but, I mean, oftentimes municipalities will want a parking garage wrapped with uses, wrapped with office or retail or something to screen the parking garage. So by eliminating this, I mean, you're kind of just saying the only use you can have here is the parking garage.
However, you could always have an amendment to the plan.
Can always amend.
I think we're not precluding it forever, just saying.
Just that this is.
It's not part of this plan.
Right.
That's what we want.
Okay.
See, and then I think the only thing we have to look at behind a parking garage is somebody said that, Jessica.
Right, we'll have to just get.
Yeah, that's where I think if you're doing a parking garage, where they had talked about the tearing.
Yeah, I think that would come out.
That would come out.
Right, you wouldn't, well, because right now, the, I think it says the tearing doesn't apply to parking structures, but that would just would be a move.
Issue.
Issue, yeah. Okay.
Anyone else?
Any other comments?
I'm pretty sure Montclair was on board with that.
They were, they were on board with that, they had to take that.
In fact, they delayed your decision waiting for us to make this decision.
Does anybody disagree with that or want to amend that in any way? Okay, or do you want to take, take a vote or we just all in agreement? I'm fine with that.
Again, I think you just have to remind Jessica, you take the parts that are moot now that apply to a regular building, office building, bearing in a parking structure.
Right, so any, if you're going to do any approving today to council, it could be conditioned upon that.
Right.
Any recommendation of the plan to council, it could be conditioned upon X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
And we have, in the ordinance or however it's written out now, there's the, the mashing of any parking structure is.
That's correct. And just to call, we're recommending to the council, there's going to be another public hearing and another opportunity to renew the plan before it's approved. So it's a recommendation to council, it's not the final plan.
Okay, what's next, Ken?
Making a note, hold on. Okay, so that coming out, 5, I'm just trying to match up these extra notes here to make sure I don't pass one. My notes note, actually, section, I guess, 5.5, where I received the addendum that we got today, taking out the curtain wall or strip windows out of 5.5, deleting that last sentence.
So what's in the book has one change and we want to include.
So we, the change that actually in the book was taken out the last meeting, we're taking out the second to the last, so section 5.5 is going to read, "All windows and glazing shall be demonstrably responsive to the context. Windows in general shall be square or rectangular and proportion similar to adjacent structures." That's it.
And this, it appears that there's a comment that this is what was recommended by our HPC.
That's correct, because I agree.
Okay.
Everybody's good with that?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, my next note is section 6.0, I guess, where they have a, just a correction, 6.0B, the correction again on this supplemental sheet that we got today, fixing the grammar. And has everybody, has everybody read the section B where, where it talks about the parking study, three years, everybody's good with that? Parking study again in three years?
Yeah.
Okay, and then every five years after the CO is issued. And then they've added in the section about the review conducted by other board determines that the parking supply is insufficient, hospital should be required to go back to the board and resolve the parking problem.
And that's now, this has been changed to, shall be required to go back to both boards to resolve the parking problem.
Okay. My next note is going through, page 51, the question, section 7.9, utilities, third line, end of line, is this, this backup was not caused by a surcharge? Was it supposed to be surge?
Surcharge.
Surcharge?
What you mean is that it was not by, at the capacity type, it was not that the load in the hardware exceeded the capacity to buy it.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question on page 48.
Okay.
About the existing trees and why is there no reference? I told you, the tongue with the trees and all the signs we have on the streets and why are we going to just follow Montclair?
Because generally what occurs at our site plan level is that there's a recommendation that the plan be approved by the town forest or arborist rather than specific standards. So Montclair has some specific standards, which at the site plan stage, we could refer to our forester to enhance. Generally, that's, we always look at, because each, we look at each site being unique, that there wasn't one site, but also we rely on our forest to approve the landscaping plan. That's what we've been doing for the last 15 years.
Yeah, but this is for existing trees. I think there we should have more input then as to what they will be replaced with than Montclair.
I have the same issue, Robbie, and we do have what's known as a shade tree commission, but it doesn't have the authority that Montclair has, so I think that's the reason why we were deferring to Montclair.
They have very specific tree planting and replacement requirements. If you move X tree, you have to replace X many more trees.
Yes, because that is one of the issues in that, I don't want to go on a tangent, but one of the issues when we form a shade tree commission is not to have authority over private development, but only in the public right of way, see how it work out, tend to counsel the rate they may give on purview over private property. So that was a big issue when we formed a shade tree commission. So right now, the shade tree commission's authority only assists in the public right of way.
To Robbie's point, we should take comfort in that the Montclair folks are on it.
Initially, we do, I re-quoted the Montclair code, we looked at the stringent standards and that's what we recommended to be these site plan standards. And that also is supplemented within the plan itself, so we often go beyond the plan, beyond the Montclair standards.
Correct.
Could we note that we consult with our shade tree commission, not in a formal way?
Because that's one thing to remember, it's a site plan process. This is the plan. When it comes to site plan, we're going to want the engineer, we're going to want utility engineers, we're going to want the forester to weigh in on the plan. So this is setting, this is not a site plan review, but at that point, you can do what we always do, is require approval from the different consultants that we have, recommendations from the consultants.
All right, so we can refer to the shade tree commission when that time comes.
As part of the site plan process. But right now, going to Jessica's point, we don't have any ordinance where a shade tree commission has any authority over private property or site management.
Right, but the board does.
The board does. So when it comes to that, the site plan, you could refer to the shade tree commission.
We can get the recommendations and then act accordingly.
And you could act that, in your resolution, you could adopt whatever the recommendations are from the shade tree commission.
Okay.
And for.
Yeah, we should reflect. Ms. Seale just.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, I'm late.
So we were just talking about page 48 in the bound book. Robbie, does that satisfy your concern?
I understand it's not a regular problem.
Right. I had a question on page 54.
I'm sorry, can I go back to 52?
Sure.
Just, I guess, a comment or an observation and it can be addressed, that's fine, but I noticed in Sub A, when we talk about the whole sewage issue, that there is a statement that is part of the site plan process, the developer shall measure the flow, the reviewing engineers shall determine if the system can handle the flow. And then see, if there is insufficient capacity, there are several options, and I understand historically the problem is a bit of a fluke, it was taken care of, but should there be some affirmative statement that, that if indeed there is insufficient capacity, there are several options and action will be taken?
Well, actually, I may, I may have, Ms. Seale, I wrote that section. What I'm saying is that there's several options if there is insufficient flow, which remember, we came from a high, potentially a higher use, having a nursing school with residences to medical office buildings, so actually there may be a decrease in the historical flows. Second, if there is insufficient capacity, there's several measures meaning that we're not, this is an alarm. If there is insufficient flows, we have an interceptor from Montclair that's a 24-inch pipe, we have a 10-inch pipe right down at Bay and Ridgewood, which has more insufficient capacity to take this flow. Also, you could do remining, reline the man balls, you could also increase the coefficient of friction on the flow and just remine the pipe, so.
But I guess my only point is.
I agree with you.
Like, should we make some affirmative statements that something will, something or that.
Well, I thought it said in the fact that there's two options, which right now we know are technically feasible, that at the worst case scenario, they go down to Bay and Ridgewood and you have two, two systems that can easily handle the flow.
But what's the, what's the plan of action should there be a problem? What?
The problem is two things. We looked at, one, if there isn't sufficient, well, we did these, we looked at this in 97, there was a, they used to have a laundry, which created much more clutter in the hospital. So the hospital has really historically decreased flow into that pipe, so they have given up operations as part of site plan approvals at the hospital site. So they actually, the use, the flow in that pipe has decreased since 1997. We'll do this study, in this case, we'll recommend to the board either relining the pipes if there need be, or extending the source system and running another service line down to Bay and Ridgewood, where there's a 24-inch pipe with a large interceptor.
I think what we're asking is.
I don't want a lot that's into a course of action, but.
Maybe one.
They will be considered.
Well, so could I suggest after?
Just they will be considered.
Well, I was going to, if there is insufficient capacity, comma, the developer shall remedy the insufficient.
You could do that, but I mean.
By selecting one of these options.
Yeah, but that's, okay, I agree. Typically, though, in site plan, we look at the total water source capacity, and if you don't have either, the project has to go forward until you have.
Right, but I think, I think the worry is that after site plan and they build it and everything's operating, suddenly something's not working.
Well, what they do is they have an agreement, you know, with 1997, if that's the option, that they'll build another pipe, because they're, you have an agreement with.
But I, I think adding a statement like Tim just suggested is prudent. Tim, you want to restate that?
So what are we going to say?
I like this one.
If there is insufficient capacity.
Right, says developer shall remedy.
Developer shall remedy to the satisfaction of the.
At their cost.
Of course, all this is at their cost.
Right, through, through one of the following options.
Well, in consultation with the engineer, right?
Correct.
Well, it's not very clear in the way it's written that the developer is responsible for this.
When it turns into an ordinance, it will be.
I think it would be better to just say that the developer will.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the developer shall remedy.
Right, instead of there are options and he said, yeah, there are options, you pay me, I'll do it.
And we don't have to limit it to these options, because five years from now, there might be a better option.
I mean, that can all be written into the developer agreement as well.
Yeah, because we're taking another step, I mean, the expense will all be on the developer.
Why we're adding it all? Why, what's the point of this?
We shouldn't be listing the options.
This was brought up at a public hearing that we had insufficient capacity, so these were addressing a resident's comment.
I think if we mentioned it, we should preferably state that the developer has responsibility. If it's all part of site plan, we should take that.
Yeah, I stand corrected, because I assumed everything is at the developer's fault.
Right.
So what's the final?
So if there is, let's see, if there is insufficient capacity, the developers should remedy in consultation with the reviewing engineer, which can include several options, such as relining the sewer pipes or connecting downstreams and shall be at the sole cost.
They're saying we should not list the options. We should just have a period after.
Personally, I've counted any of those for my recommendations. I've looked at the situation, that's my recommendation. It's, it's not something that's not, like, I looked at the situation and there's two, and I also consulted with Gary Altsani, who's the, our wastewater manager and operator, and he agrees with me on the options.
But this says including these two options. It's not, it's not only these two options, is there any other options that come up as well? I mean, it's not.
And the other thing it can do is water conservation within, within the building, that's another option.
Right.
These are later suggested options.
I'm sorry?
We will be calling them as suggested options.
Yeah.
We could add suggested.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Instead of water conservation.
It's too early in the process to address timeframe and stuff like that. It's not part of this purview. In the site plan, we can talk more about that. So everybody's okay with that?
We didn't want to.
Emery?
I'm sorry.
Can you read it back one more time?
Sure. It'll be better in the final part, it goes something like this, if there is insufficient capacity. If there is insufficient capacity, the developer shall remedy such capacity problem in consultation with reviewing, reviewing engineer to consider options which could include relining the sewer pipes or connecting downstream to a larger capacity pipe, or water conservation, which, which shall be at the sole cost of the rede，则r. Something to that effect.
Anybody, excuse me?
Sure, including for the remedy too.
Okay. Everybody's good with that, board? All the board members?
Yeah, and just Jessica, you, you used the word or the term redevelopers. I don't know if you need to go back. Sometimes it says developer, sometimes redeveloper.
It's the same.
Yeah, I know, so, but it should just be consistent in the document.
Yeah, plans often will have a line item that said wherever there's a developer or redevelopers, they shall use the same thing.
Okay. Any more comment on this particular topic? Everybody's fine? Want anybody to leave unhappy? Um, okay. My next comment is on fifty-four. Anyone? Stop earlier than that? I have a question about the designated smoking area, because I know that the hospital had said that they have a no smoking policy. Are they going to permit this?
So what happened at the main, something, Montclair planning board meeting, was the hospital onsite at the meeting negotiated with the owners of thirty-two Sugarwood to purchase their property, and they agreed on a purchase plan. And the hospital's representatives came up and said on two conditions, one of which would be you strike that out of the plan. So that is why now in the plan, we say if thirty-two Sugarwood is not acquired, they shall provide a designated smoking area. And this was, because this, again, was a resident request. Because of the adjacent properties, just having to deal with the smoking visitors, employees, staff.
But based on the state of play, that's almost certain not to come to hand.
Right.
Okay.
I have another question about that.
Yeah.
What do we do about the smoking area? I know the hospital said that they have a strict no smoking policy, but people are going to smoke. Where are they going to do that? I mean, I was walking past there the other day, and people were literally kind of talked around the bushes in one of those vacant homes, smoking, with badges on. I mean, the residents' voices, that this is a problem, it's not going to go away. So how do we fix that in this?
I don't think this is the process where we can do that. We don't really have jurisdiction over that. That's a hospital policy. That's a hospital programming issue.
I hear you, but the residents had, the residents were saying they're going to come to our property, they're in that area of redevelopment, it's still a problem. Like, I mean, I know we can't fix the problem, but is there going to be open space someplace for these people?
The hospital currently has a campus-wide no smoking. They've joined on to some national program of seeing a non-smoking campus. So you're correct, what that does is push smokers outside the boundaries of their campus and then onto non-campus areas.
My suggestion, if we do have jurisdiction to require a smoking area to remedy this problem, that it be indoors, small room somewhere or something. I'm not for it, believe me.
No.
But they will probably lose their non-smoking status, and I don't know what that would do.
Non-smoking.
I think, you know, I think the issue is that hospital employees are wandering off campus and smoking in various places, many times in front of people's homes or on people's stoops, as was said at the, at one of the open meetings. I mean, short of calling the police, I mean, what are we going to do about this? Where can we address this here? Because.
It's not, but it's not going away, right.
It's going to migrate somewhere else.
Correct.
Right.
It's a, it's a hospital programming issue. This isn't something that the redevelopment plan can really solve. I mean, we, we're doing what we can and saying there should be an area for smoking.
Well, I think we cannot force the hospital to have a smoking room, because that goes against which everyone else is doing.
Or a smoking area outdoors, in my opinion.
No, I don't know. Do we have the restriction to have smoking banned in public streets and areas?
We currently.
This is a question.
Currently, well, this board doesn't, but the council has, that's North Jackson, we were the first in San New Jersey, that smoking in any public vehicle, any public building, any public property is prohibited.
So all parks?
All parks are prohibited.
Right.
And the land is prohibited. So any, any rural property, smoking prohibited. We did that in.
Area adjacent to the hospital, which is publicly owned, streets and all that.
Right.
I think maybe as part of.
Considered as a no smoking zone.
As part of site plan approval, you're going to want to hear from them how they plan to address this problem.
Right.
Because this is something that is programmatic on their end, and not something that we can really legislate, but you will want to hear from them. How are you going to deal with this?
But people will walk off the property, and they'll be smoking on Glen Ridge property and Montclair property, and we have to be ready, municipalities have to be ready to address that.
Right, so maybe they need to find another property that's not, because it's part of the campus to let people smoke. They'll have to.
It's going to be a problem, and it's not going to go away. All right. So clearly, we're going to have to talk about that further.
The provision, there is a provision in here now that requires them to have a smoking area under certain conditions.
Yeah, it's thirty-two Sugarwood.
We don't have authority to do that, and I understand it to lose point, but I, I wonder why it was in there at all.
I think it's in there as a trigger.
I know, I know why, but I, I wonder why we or Montclair think we should use something that we don't think we have authority to do, that's why it's not going to happen.
I don't think we should have it in the document.
Okay. It's being removed from the documents.
Yeah, just opposed contrary to what we are fishing.
Yeah, because this, the property's sold.
Taking it, it's coming out.
Yeah.
But it's staying in because the property still isn't taken out. It would be.
Yeah, that, that's another question I have. If the property hasn't, if the sale hasn't closed, why would this not be in here?
Well, it hasn't closed.
But so this is not going to be deleted, right?
It wouldn't be deleted. I mean, that's what we're defining today.
So this is going to remain as, as is.
Montclair is okay with it remaining.
Okay.
Is Glen Ridge, do we take it out? I mean, we could just change it to the, at the time of site plan approval, the hospital shall provide the board with a plan for addressing employee smoking.
Do we have jurisdiction over that, though? I mean, how can we force the hos- I mean, just getting back to the original question, which is residents voiced a problem. We're, they're in the area of redevelopment, we're dealing with the area of redevelopment. We said we would help address this problem, so this got put in somehow. Whether this property is sold or not, and I'm personally fine with leaving that in, you still have the problem. And we can't force the hospital, so you have to figure out this problem, but the problem isn't going to go away, people are still going to smoke, residents are still going to complain. So I think the right thing to do is to say, one of these open spaces, like, they don't want anything built on this one section, that block and lot, they, Montclair doesn't want anything built there, then maybe that becomes part of a smoking area, like a little tiny smoking area, because the problem's going to exist, so.
The problem is, in their agreement, and we do want the hospital, they're here, talk about this, but they have this agreement where they've signed on to be a non-smoking campus, and it's not limited on any of their property to be a part of this consortium. So my suggestion is you just put it in here as a community concern, that they should address it at the time of site plan approval, and explain what their plan is to limit the incidence of that happening.
And just, Robbie, my reaction would be to expand the no smoking area around the hospital through the borough ordinances, rather than allow smoking somewhere on the campus.
I agree with it.
And.
If that can be done, yes.
But I, but I think it's already there, it's already in place, right? You can't smoke in public air.
Well, you can't on public, on public property.
Right.
I stay with this tomorrow. On the sidewalk, you can smoke, can you? Because, but we have a concert in New York. So, so that, what these people are doing is legal. We could make it illegal. So, I mean, technically.
It could be non-hospital people.
We know they smoke. They could smoke, I'm going to say Bay Avenue, because that's Montclair, because they're within the public right of way, because there's no prohibition. Once they enter hospital property, that would be prohibited. Also, if they're smoking on private property, you should call the police, I mean, that's in court, that's trespass.
Right.
If they're going on private property and smoke, so there's, we have other regulations to deal with that, and if they're going on private property and smoke, they're trespassing, and then police should be able to take care of whether they're in Montclair or in Mont Clair.
And, and that includes sidewalks?
Well, sidewalks, well, it is. Sidewalks, technically sidewalks, you could smoke if that's public property, whether it's Montclair or Glen Ridge. It's not publicly owned, like parks or buildings. If they go on private, the complaints I heard about is people going on private property, that's trespass. So it's not a fact that you're smoking, you actually should not be on that property without the owner's consent.
So are we deleting this section or reviving it to just say this issue should be brought up at site plan?
Will it cause a problem with our brethren from Montclair and systems?
No, I doubt it, because it's not that, it's not like this section has a ton of teeth.
So what's, what's the sentiment? Do we leave it?
I have an idea that it should be addressed in the.
Change it to the site plan recommendation?
I agree, take it out.
Take it out to be addressed at the site plan.
Okay. I'll just put a little note that residents had a stressed concern, and this issue should be addressed at the time of site plan approval.
Okay. Next section.
I have a comment on eight point seven.
Go ahead.
I like that most of this was taken out, so that's good. Still think it's a little bit of a commercial. The, I, I would recommend that it just stop where it's white, and left where it's hospital and the township, and then all the blue be struck. I'm not sure why we're defining what the ice and iron greenway is here, because.
I actually thought there, that's what.
I thought that was coming out.
That's what we had discussed at the meeting, so.
Right, and so, I don't know where that sentence got left in.
Um, because there were people on Montclair's board that thought that it, we should at least explain for people who've never heard of it, since it's in the public documents, what exactly it is, where the line runs from.
So maybe it should just say that.
And you just put it as a footnote?
Well, maybe it should just say for a future, um, greenway or easement, rather than even defining it, because what if it's called something else? You know, by the time, because it's not even, I mean, it's, right now, the way I understand the proposal is for rail and trail. So people would need to understand that it's to still have rail, not just to be a greenway connecting, so it's not really defined right here. So it might just be better off to just say access for a future.
Right, I mean, it was only meant to be enforced as.
Instead of greenway, just rails, trails, that's actually the title of the project right now.
I get, you know, I just don't, you know, I don't know why we're.
Why don't you say?
We're making it sound like it's real and.
Just say future greenway. Possible future greenway.
But the current concept is a great thing to.
Or rail, rail greenway, or something, you know, where.
Right now, it says rails and trails, we're talking about a rail trail, which I did every time.
Right.
And I didn't understand the point, so maybe just clarify that language.
Yeah, and I, you know, like, it could just kind of, you know, it's currently ongoing off, you know, I don't understand why that's on the table.
I understand.
I support that. Okay, um, anybody have anything in nine, section nine?
I just have one general question. Where is the level of service defined?
And the level of service, if we have the supplementary, this is developed by DHD and the traffic study, we have the current level of services.
It's in the somewhere?
It's all, it's all detailed in that, yeah.
So we have, this document will be part of redevelopment plan, will be an appendix, which defines that level of service that we measure, DHD measures probably, it's not yet.
And this document is referenced somewhere here?
Yeah, it'd be referenced. Yeah, it's a study by DHDM, it's dated April twenty-eighth.
Any other?
I just, I guess, have a comment, observation question. I know this came up at the end, at the very end of our very long joint meeting, this notion of there's a statement in here that the level of service shall not be degraded, but yet how do, how do you measure if in fact there has been any degrading? And I know we discussed, you know, there may be two, three years out, other developments that will impact, so you can't just tie it to this plan. But can you just comment or explain how, how, how do you enforce this, or how do you measure if in fact there has, has been?
Generally, it's all hypothetical, it's not at the site plan stage, we'll deal with, we'll have a traffic engineer, we'll have a traffic engineer at Montclair, and we'll create models. And based on statistics, based on other medical office buildings, we'll determine, we'll project what the usage is with the traffic, close our base on these different traffic. The traffic engineer's basically on the model, and then projecting from that, you'll get what predicted, how well services will be. To perform a traffic study, just to be thought about, the Montclair meetings recently, from now, would entail huge, so with all the redevelopment in Montclair, in Montclair field, you would have to analyze what the impact is from the medical office building, if they being a county road, if not isolated, if it's not going to be loading, Glen Ridge, that might be easier to accomplish, but being on Bay Avenue, which is a major, it's their premier, they're, they're in the county, maybe very difficult to isolate the impact. That's why the parting impact is easier to do, because it's completely controlled by the hospital. And basically, we're going to have to rely on our traffic expert to go through the analysis during the site plan procedure, to see what projections are by ten years. And so what we'll do is not only look at the impact of the medical office building, based on historical trends on development, look at increased traffic on Bay Avenue five and twenty years out, and then come up with a traffic. So a lot, there will be projections, nothing is going to be, basically, count that are performed now, and then with models projecting what future growth will impact those intersections.
Well, so DHD does announce this, you know, the date of April twenty-eighth, at the time of site plan approval, you know, there'll be a new baseline, because their traffic engineer's going to have to conduct a study, so they'll be, what is the baseline at that point in time, and then the projection, what's the difference? And basically, the difference can't be any worse than it is at the baseline.
And then when you get into fixing it, or how?
Mitigation.
Mitigation.
And then in the mitigation, their expert will have free solutions, our expert, and we're looking with the site, the board rather, will have to agree at those sort of proper measures. So we're not going to be, Montclair's going to be looking at it, we're going to be looking at it with our traffic consultants, and we'll have to approve whatever we're basing that too much, so. But basically, it's a model, it's not an actual measuring five years from now, it's more the level of services, it's modeling it to see what we projected level of service to be in five and ten, fifteen years.
Or i- is there a shorter period of time that you would model it to, or is it all five and ten years?
Oh, no, we, we wanted to, we, we would model, we would model, we would model A1, of course. But then you want to look what happens to an intersection as traffic, as traffic gets up in the area, so it's, but to measure traffic five years from now, and then relate growing at the hospital will be very difficult, depending on what the growth patterns are in the area.
Well, that's why, to me, I was thinking, well, one year out, in some shorter period of time, where there might not be other development, you might be able to better track what's directly affected by this development.
I mean, we could, we could, I mean, the municipalities, basically, the intersections that are, we're concerned with on Montclair, municipality can always come back and do their own studies on those areas, see if there's any of that, but I don't know.
I recall at the joint meeting, the discussion, the optimal time to do that, and they said it might take a year just to get filled and everybody, and so, two years out is more appropriate than one, I just don't know the right.
But going back, I agree with your point, so people understand how to get there, but But then, it's like, isolating is the most difficult part for an impact speed. That's why generally, if there's an impact speed, it's done at the site plan, with you saying, you could determine if there's gonna be an impact correction on the law.
And so that, that impact speed would cover the cost of any mitigation?
Cover their proportionate share.
Okay, so if there needs to be a light traffic light, or if there needs to be one way to be different?
Correct. There may be different solutions, I don't wanna get into the site plan, but maybe a light at fine in Claremont Bay town, there might be of five, whatever the cost may be. So that's something we would look at at site plan stage. If there's other measures outside of the campus, that may help with traffic.
For instance, if a, if a light at fine is put there before this goes to site plan review, the traffic conditions are gonna change, that baseline will change, it could be a lot better.
Right, right.
And that may change everything.
Just clarify, how does it work between Montclair and Glen Ridge? Um, you know, if some sort of traffic change is on the, uh, Montclair side, do we review it?
No, that, that's the problem, we're talking about doing a study a couple of years out, there could be approvals on the Montclair side that create traffic by a bay, or Glen Ridge for that matter, and one impact speed, possible, so that's, I think, with the plan, the Montclair board was talking about how difficult it is.
I've heard a question that, say you were gonna put in a, a traffic light in Glen Ridge, would any notice go out to Montclair, we're gonna certainly use the bad one, and, you know, that like, you're gonna make that change?
Yeah, we talked about it.
Well, you know, we don't need site planning, but we don't need site planning in each other's property.
No, right.
So like, if, if Montclair has decided to take out all their traffic light for some reason-
We're actually doing the opposite, doing the opposite.
I know, I'm just saying, you know, so that, you know, everything just cl- plonked up at Glen Ridge, we wouldn't have anything to say.
Yeah, but that Highland Bay intersection is a Montclair intersection, so that's really the two critical intersections we're looking at. One is Preston and, uh, Claremont, and then Bay and Highland, both of those are in Montclair, that's the two Montclair intersections. Uh, those are the ones that we're looking at that creates the most problems with maintaining a level of service. I mean, Bay, Bay and Highland will definitely include a light, like one in Preston, Claremont is one of the areas that we're really having problems. I know the applicant will have to really show demonstrate that the level of service remains the same.
Right, but it's county roads.
Well, county stops at, at, at five, and because of Montclair, because what we think is Bay Avenue is former Crescent, or is former Crescent, and that's a Montclair, so we also have jurisdictional problems. We have three municipalities, two municipalities and a county meeting at one point.
Right, that's, I just didn't know how that, even gets looked at, comprehensively once we-
I understand. Then at that point, if he comes to Montclair, so it's, uh, it's easy to become a county road, get to Montclair road right at the intersection.
We don't have a lot of that.
Right. Yeah, basically, we're looking at, from a Glen Ridge perspective, we're looking at our intersection, which are minimal, so it's basically the Collin Avenue.
Okay. And Reed, does that settle, settle the side?
And, yes, I have also a question with little sub, sub C, uh, the language, the, I guess, the last sentence in sub C, um, in addition, the redevelopers may be responsible for a proportionate share of the cost of off-track improvements, is, is associated with traffic mitigation? Is that only with respect to the Walnut, Claremont and Walnut Crescent, or is that every intersection that's affected by that?
Their development is shown to create a negative impact to other intersections, then they would be required to pay a proportionate share of the off-track improvement?
So if, because we're saying that the, uh, any new equipment needs to be, um, signaled, equipped with video detection technology, actuated signal, and, so it, it could be possible that they could have to do something at Bay and Ridgewood Ave, if that's not an actuated signal now, to talk to the one near the hospital?
If, if the analysis shows that that maintains a level of service, so it's, it's all key on level of service.
Right, if they're impacting the level of service at that intersection?
Like, I picture, you know, a lot of people coming, you know, up Bay, in that direction, you know, from Broad Street or Ridgewood Ave or, you know, something. So if we're seeing that the level of service deteriorates at that intersection, so they may be in full time, you know, edit the traffic, they could be required to do something to up the traffic.
But it's a possibility, I think the question is, it's a possibility that that could happen, if it was determined by the experts that that was causing, one was-
And that's why we pay the proportionate share of off-track improvement to cover yourself in those situations.
Of course, of course, if the first one down includes a level of service that's under redevelopment, that could be a mitigation.
Right, right. Okay, is that, okay. Any more on the traffic?
In terms of any new traffic signals aesthetically, is there anything about what they should look like?
That's site plan, right? Site plan.
That would be part of, one part of site plan, and, uh, what they're gonna have to do for a traffic, is actually go through, uh, department transportation for workers, and there's standards that they're having to maintain that are a little different than we see at this, with Bay and Glen Ridge.
And county, does county do that too?
Well, the county don't have to do it, but it's, uh, they're, the light standards would be simple, we could say there'd be more so much of what we have on Ridgewood and Glen Ridge, and on the Ridgewood, and, uh, they have a road to that, so they would have to be on this, uh, current-
Right, but isn't showing that, like, you know, the, the steel versus the more decorative?
I think that would be a part of the site plan. Once it's-
We would wanna put that in here.
No, we can specify it in the site plan, in the site plan review.
You have to catch it, it's hard to catch that thing, though.
You gotta look at the plan.
That's the plan.
Right.
I mean, whether they're saying aesthetically how it looks.
They're just showing, um, you know, the list providing details of all the improvements, and you'll be able to see them.
Because most likely, they'll be at the site plan approval before they receive a part, part of a transportation approval, so you'll have input before quality and immediate applications to the, uh, department.
Okay. Any more on the street intersection? Anybody have anything on the sign and wayfinding? Next, okay. Section eleven, I think, is next, on sustainability. And we have a, uh-
I, I would love to read the latest version of this sentence.
Okay.
Um, but it says-
That, it's different than what we have in front of us?
Slightly, um-
It's different than the handout we got?
Maybe, you may have it with the handout, but no.
With the handout, plus, I know it's just a, a slight little change. Um, but you can follow along, it's very similar. Um, this was the recommendation from the Montclair Planning Board. A development that is in the development area shall include sufficient green building techniques which result in an accumulation of at least fifty points, which would be required for LEED Silver Certification under the LEED Version Four for B V plus C new construction and major renovation checklist, or LEED Version Four B V plus C healthcare, annexed here to a appendix fee. It's being stipulated, however, that the redevelopers shall not be required to apply the LEED certification, but must show how the redeveloper achieves the points.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's what we have.
Does that, okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Chairman.
Uh, I represent developer, and we'd like to be heard on this point, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to speak now.
No, please, hold, hold your thoughts, we'll give you a chance, but let us talk first, okay?
No, we have the, the dis-.
Okay, I didn't know, because this was late coming, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good with that?
Yep. You guys, everybody's good with that?
So the issue is, um, is that the, you know, the developer is looking to just do LEED certified, not a bronze, silver, gold, platinum, you name it, just LEED certified. The Montclair Planning Board, um, there are several developers on that board, and they feel that, and I quote, "In today's day and age, they should be providing a minimum LEED Silver." Those, that was the opinion of a couple of members of the Montclair Planning Board.
Okay.
And again, remember, this isn't that they have to go through the whole certification process, um, improve certification, this is, you know, they need to provide a checklist that shows what they're doing, and then show how they're going to achieve those points in the site plan document. So the difference we're talking about is ten points, um, between LEED certified, which I believe is forty, and LEED Silver, which I believe is fifty. Um, also keep in mind, this is, you're here tonight to make a recommendation to your council, um, and your recommendation to your council could be to change this, to keep this, um, and then it would be up to council to make a final decision.
Okay.
So you could just put the ball in their court.
I think we'll leave it at this, I agree with, on the agenda.
From Montclair one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There.
I don't feel equipped to, I, I, I'm not a, I don't know, I'm not equipped to, I can't, my university's, I don't know, what the burden is, what.
So you wanna believe this?
I'm, I'm okay with this.
You're okay with this, okay?
Other reasons.
You had a lot of questions at the, at the open meeting.
Well, no, my concern always was that I didn't think it would be reasonable or money well spent to require the developer to actually certify.
Right, right.
Because that's a convoluted process, costly in time. But this doesn't say that. No, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's the point, yeah.
Right, so, uh-
This does change the characteristics of the checklist that you have to meet, I mean, is that basically, it, it, it's adding to the checklist?
Right, instead of doing forty points where, um, they'll have to do ten more points.
But not go through the formal certifications like the process, just as the artifact.
Right, right, but then straight to the board, and I imagine your board would need some sort of expert, um, that can review that and say, okay, yes, they are gonna meet, yep, look, here's the bike raft, there's the local water fixtures they're proposing, there's the solar reflectivity of the roof, you know, and what have you, and someone to actually say, look through the checklist and work through the plans and make sure it matches up.
So who would do this? Who would?
The reviewing board, either how that-
Yeah, you have to get an expert.
We'd engage a consultant.
Yeah.
Maybe someone on Montclair already has that.
Right, so somebody, somebody may, it could be a combination, if they manage an IRA, or it could be that they need somebody else, you know?
We'll have to determine that as we go forward. So everybody's okay with leaving this as is?
Absolutely.
I mean, you're-
Yeah, now we will-
Somebody is, I don't think he is.
Sir, would you like to come up?
Thank you. Uh, the issue is with the ten points, that's the real issue here. Um, you know, we were asked to meet certain level, uh, or to increase the sustainability for this project, and forty points was proposed, and the response was, well, we need you to meet silver, we need you to get to fifty points. And the real issue here is, you know, there's been several tweaks to the plan, and, and some of those tweaks have added the cost of this project, which is obviously a part of this process, this is how it works. But now we've gotten to the point where, as, it only seems like going from forty to fifty to ten points, what is that? But my client has analyzed that, and it's a significant impact, I mean, it's getting to the point where, from their position, it might be the straw that breaks the camel's back, in that it's going to increase the cost of rent, um, substantially to the project overall, which is gonna hurt the markability of this project's potential tenants. So, um, you know, we certainly understand, you know, what's being set up here, but we wanna let you know that, you know, we're vehemently opposed to the fifty points, uh, we are okay with the forty points, we did make that concession and, and offer the forty points. Um, Montclair, obviously, is still pushing for fifty, but we would ask that, you know, you recommend the forty points over the fifty points because of the reasons I just stated. I mean, there is a significant concern about the ability to market this project and, and, you know, the balance between sustainability and, you know, the affordability.
Do you have any evidence with you tonight that could help us justify your, you know, cost impact analysis versus forty versus fifty? I mean, I understand you're, you're making the statement, but, you know, and for us to make a recommendation, what, what else can you tell?
And I, I wish I did, I do not. I mean, the whole issue is that this stiff, we had proposed forty points earlier in the week, or at the end of last week, and then they came back to fifty points, Montclair did, so, you know, I know my client analyzed it internally, but as far as giving you documentation and, you know, facts about, to support that, I really don't have anything to provide you with.
Do the points go in increments of one or two? I mean, so if you pick the number in between, is that achievable, or are there like two, four, six? How do points work, do we know?
I don't look that in.
I don't believe it's single points.
It's not a single point.
I think it's intermittent, five.
Yeah. If you have, have no more facts, I'm, I'm gonna say thank you very much.
All right, well, I just wanted to, to, the point is, uh, forty points is the basic level, which is what we're planning to meet, whereas fifty points is the silver level, I, I can't really provide anything beyond that, though.
Thanks.
Usually, when you go to these silver, platinum, or whatever, there are savings also in the operating side, and I don't know if you guys consider it, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that they've considered it all, I mean, they're very experienced in these type of projects, and for this particular project, this is a, a major issue for them.
I think it's, it's just hard to really determine without any facts on your side, to, to know that whether you, you've thought about that or not, so it's, you know.
I wonder, could we, I'll just start out there, could we put an asterisk for something that we recognize that the redevelopers, if you will, has expressed, you know, in terms of us making a recommendation to council, and let council-
Let council decide.
Decide.
Yeah. Sure.
I agree with that, I mean, I think, to the extent your argument is convincing, it has to be more than just your statement.
I understand that. Unfortunately, there just wasn't enough time for us to prepare that.
Yeah, but you could convince the, the council when the opportunity-
Yeah.
Next, um, is it possible to submit, like, a general list of what you're proposing versus, you know, say, this, these are the items, the, for the, whatever, forty points, like, is it, is that the way it works? Like, could you say, like, bullet pointed ideas, like, just to submit it, like, this is what we're planning on?
It's, it's so early in this state, in the game, I mean, we're working on perceptuals right now, so I don't know what our ability would be able to do that.
But that has to be make the statement and say forty to fifty, if you don't really even know what forty is, I'm just asking.
You know, and to be honest, I'm not a lead expert, so, you know, this is something where, you know, we, our people analyzed it, our client analyzed this, saw what makes up the forty points, said, okay, this is something we can do for this project, um, and then when they came back with fifty in that short period of time, they looked at it, and it just wasn't, it, it's very, you know, it's very tight, it's very tough to, to meet that standard, for the markability.
Okay, again, I, I mean, interrupt you, but without, without facts, thank you very much for your comments, and we'll, we'll talk about it, and-
The plan is probably better spent trying to talk to some of the Montclair Planning Board members who are really being sticklers on this point. It seems that Glen Ridge Planning Board is pretty open, one way or the other, but they don't wanna step on the toes of the Montclair Planning Board members who are, who have come back numerous times to them, even knowing your position.
Right, and the, the reason we spoke up is because Montclair on, on Monday night had said that they were gonna look to the Glen, see what the Glen Ridge Planning Board thought, and so, you know, we wanted to make it known so that you understand this isn't just a, a minor issue, it's a pretty significant issue for us.
But we still have, we still have this step where council sees this to approve it.
Right.
So you have time to gather facts and figure out-
You have, you have time to get that and present to council.
Okay, thanks.
The best board helps you get a list of all the different, um, options for, you know, the goals we've set or so, or anything.
The planning board is looking to pass this on to the council to make a decision, and council's gonna have to get, we're, we're not gonna take any more comment. I'm sorry, we'll take it at the, at the end of the, end of the conversation.
So the recommendation is what the Montclair Planning Board is looking for, and the Montclair Planning Board recommendation is what the Glen Ridge Planning Board is looking for.
This is fine, I think we should roll in this fifty points.
We can say that it's between forty and fifty.
Everybody is building, needing, they, they, nobody is investing money in just building the-
I think you're afraid that the council will decide between at least forty to fifty.
Right, between forty to fifty. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we'll have a minimum, yeah, if you wanna take fifty, or whatever, but at least fifty.
So how would you restate that?
Um, I think that we would, we would maintain the same in the plan as it is right now, but in the resolution where you're referring this to your council, you would, you would say that, that you would basically have a council make the decision on the final language.
So what language is in here right now?
Well, it says at least fifty.
At least, okay.
Right, so it, you know, forty's, yeah, it says at least fifty, it doesn't say minimum of fifty. Okay. So we'll write the resolution to that effect. Any other comments on the sustainability? Anyone have any items on section twelve to thirteen? Note that we have these two items in the addendum from section thirteen point eleven and section thirteen point one seven.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Thirteen eleven C, this is a complete add, correct?
Yes, both of them are, are new.
So we're adding both of these to these. So the first one, section thirteen point eleven, C.
Is there a B?
There, well, there was, there's not now.
So is this two Cs, or does this C?
Because A, C, D.
That becomes, the existing property becomes B.
Okay.
So is development application?
Should be B, yeah, yes.
Okay. So you're going to amend that?
B.
So A is A, C is B, and this is, the new one is C.
Yeah.
But B stays the same, there's no changes in B, or old C.
And D is amended as we discussed the last meeting with historic preservation.
I just have a question on D, and it could be a moot point. I just don't know if Montclair got the idea that, I think we put a lot of weight in our HPC here in Glen Ridge, and I don't know if really the planning board wanted to make these design decisions, that it was really more with their strong input, and that doesn't really say that here. I think they were trying to lump it in as planning, both planning boards will review the designs with, like, sort of a consult, what does it say? It says a courtesy design review. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I figured I'd bring it up. I just didn't think, you know, we really put a strong weight into our HPC.
I could as well suggest that this doesn't limit the weight that they're allowed to put into their recommendation in any way.
I just want to put it out there, like, I just didn't know if that was cleared off, if everybody was happy with that, but that was what I was gathering from that meeting.
The issue.
No, with historic preservation, so, so we're trying to get the HPC involved in this, and that, which, to my understanding, from our legal counsel, that would be standing for cover.
Right, otherwise, they wouldn't have any.
But you decide the weight, you're a person.
Yeah, you'll get the weight, so when they come to you, you decide the weight, the planning board will decide the weight of the HPC. So technically, we can't say, like, if they were within the zone, they have full discretion, you can go down the bar, so we have to say courtesy. But that's not to say that once their plan's submitted to the planning board, that you don't pay for it from the HPC and their opinions, but how does that actually work out?
And then did that freeze, does, I mean, I just, again, I think maybe I was with some of the other people here, that design by committee, I know the architect felt really shocked about putting no design by committee, I mean, I think that's really how it's getting decided, is by committee, correct? Is that so?
Well, I think it's getting, it's getting approved by committee, he took that out, it's getting approved by committee, for sure.
Because it is to be approved by, by several committees.
Yeah, you know, I think he was sort of trying not to have it going design by being told what to do, and that unfortunately.
Essentially, you are.
Right. We're going to try as much as possible. Okay, then, everybody's okay with that? That addendum? Okay, and then the last one is section thirteen point seventeen, which is going to go on page seventy-one, it's an additional section to handle conflicts. Conflicts, in any event, in any event, if there is any conflict or inconsistency between the application, applicable provisions of the Glen Ridge Borough Ordinance and the Montclair Township Code, in this redevelopment plan, the redevelopers shall identify the conflict or inconsistency and request written clarification from the boards, from both boards.
This is very new, a lot of language developed today, and it's something we need to think about, because we, you know, in the redevelopment plan, we don't reference the Glen Ridge ordinances. When we take a stand, you know, if the redevelopment plan is specific, like, and not providing a specific policy, then it refers to the Montclair ordinance. But in all cases, the redevelopment plan succeeds all ordinances, okay? So this, I'm not sure it's really needed, because we kind of have our bases covered. If there's a, and we say this too, at the beginning of the redevelopment plan section, it talks about the regulations, any inconsistency, the redevelopment plan governs. I think this was, Michael was perhaps just putting this in because of the question, why aren't we considering the Glen Ridge ordinances? But I think we already established the reasons, and so this isn't really appropriate, because it creates confusion.
It's not, okay, so this was inserted by Montclair?
Mike McKelley.
Mike McKelley, okay.
Well, the concern, I think there were some other comments that reflected inclusion of certain Glen Ridge ordinances, which I don't think got into here. I think if you're saying there, the document is silent on Glen Ridge ordinances, then I would agree that we don't need, just my opinion.
I think one issue, we talked to Janice Kelly today, one issue, we were talking about the conflict, we both, she's in agreement that our houses should take that. So there was some, went on the fence, and then we had a question about the six of fencing and the addition of the state. She believes that, looking at the Montclair ordinances, that it's acceptable, and it's actually a benefit to the neighbors. So there was some points that we brought out, that once again, we can review in the site plan presentation, so we did speak to Janice, but we thought were complex, she believes that we had worked out through redevelopment plan. And Jessica said the redevelopment plan will take precedence over both ordinances.
Right, but the fact that the redevelopment plan doesn't reference the Glen Ridge ordinances just makes this thing very confusing.
I've got some thirteen eleven C, says borough Glen Ridge in town, ship of Montclair have different land development ordinances. So right there, it talks about it, and for consistency, Montclair code chapter, this has been adopted, and I think right here, if we want to say if there are any conflicts, this will be the procedure.
Yes, but as far as, think about this, the redevelopment plan is a new zone. Every now and then, the redevelopment plan references the Montclair ordinance for specific things, such as trees, or fences, or what have you. It never references the Glen Ridge ordinance section. So we're not, there really aren't any sections of Glen Ridge ordinance that would create this issue.
So why is it in thirteen eleven C then?
This was, again, Mike McKelley trying to address comments that he had heard, I think, from board members before tonight's meeting, but we, we broached this issue earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, I think Mike was trying to point out in this, that even though he chose to utilize the Montclair site plan standards, that the way to each board is saying that they're not stating that one board is observing the other, that both have equal standing through this redevelopment process.
I think it's just, I don't see a problem with the language, and that, I don't think there's any conflict in it, I think it's just recognizing that, yes, Glen Ridge has ordinances as well.
There's some that are almost implied, even if they're not.
They're not relevant to the plan here, because there is no ordinance of Glen Ridge used in the whole document.
But that, but this doesn't say, but this section doesn't say that. The one that we're agreeing to strike did, in essence, or at least indirectly, imply that there were Glen Ridge specific ordinances. Like, for example, on the tree issue, some of us had proposed referencing the Glen Ridge shade treaty commission, which is, you know, I don't know, chapter twenty-six of our code or whatever, but since we decided to take that out, right now, you don't really need the, the conflict provision.
The only thing we have is the HPC in the document.
Yes, that's correct.
Right? So I don't see any reason why if there is a conflict, now HPC is a ordinance too, right? Or how is that read?
That's a good question.
HPC, is that an ordinance of the town?
It's a courtesy review.
But it's a courtesy review, so.
They're not strictly applying the ordinance, it's a courtesy review, so they'll, they'll apply their experience, but the absence, I can be held to the standard of the ordinance, it's a courtesy review or not, they'll almost do. But I think what Mike was trying to do, and we kind of talked about this, is explaining our rationale, why we utilize those ordinances, because we went through both, and we had problems at other developments, in Glenmont Square being one, where half the development has one standard, the other half has another, then we have residents in Glen Ridge that live next to the Montclair section, that were complaining that we weren't following Glen Ridge ordinances. So we felt that, when we met with Janice Kelly at the beginning, we went through our ordinances, and we thought they were pretty similar, Montclair had some elements that we liked, that we hadn't experienced before, and so we decided, just by myself making a decision, that we could probably use, utilize their ordinance, just because of some of the standards they had.
So this is for the reader, then, because we feel comfortable?
We feel comfortable, we were just doing, because there was some question why we chose the ordinances, and because just that we have, both of us, when we view the plan, we have consistency within the entire site, and we're not, like Glenmont Square has certain regulations, and here you go to feed, and it's a different regulation. So we felt that, looking at the ordinances, we were satisfied for this particular development, that Montclair's site plan ordinance addressed the issues that we were concerned with, and that we felt comfortable that we could go and recommend it to the boards. So that was the genesis of that, because we sat down with Janice Kelly at the beginning of the project, and we were looking at that, we did have conflicts when we view the town upon.
I have a question on, with the, with the ordinances, is it implied or stated that the, it's, the ordinances as they exist at the time the plan is adopted, or does it, if the ordinance changes on Montclair?
At the time it was adopted.
Okay. So that's somewhere, that they changed something, it doesn't apply to any longer?
Yes, just as, yeah.
They have got plenty of fences that apply.
Right, correct.
Okay. All right, so let's take a step back a minute to thirteen point eleven C. Everybody's okay with that as is? And thirteen point seventeen, we're going to strike? Everybody's okay with that?
I think you should delete it, but Tony said maybe leave.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because some people said strike.
Well, I think in the, if you're talking about the benefit of the reader, then you leave it.
I think you delete it, I think it just causes confusion. You keep the other one, because that's really what you're trying to say, is that one board does supersede the other in terms of power, but in terms of the ordinances, this is, this is just confusion, since we don't reference the Glen Ridge ordinances.
Alan?
I'm okay with that.
You're, you agree?
Yep, I agree.
I'll do whatever.
Somewhere in the plan, there must be, that if there is any conflict, there must be some procedure, right?
If there can't be conflict, is what we're saying.
So the plan, the plan has a, is in the government, is in the.
Is in conflict with this plan.
The plan.
And that's a, somewhere.
Doesn't matter what's.
Yes.
And that's, so like, a procedure states that the developer have to bring it to the attention of the board, or how does it happen?
Definitely, for a site plan, when the engineer and planners are reviewing the site plan, to note any differences from both the redevelopment plan as well as, you know, ordinances specified, so that's, that's something for reviewers to take up.
So I think probably it needs to be taken out, because it's already coming.
Okay. Okay, so we'll strike thirteen point seventeen.
Because Montclair branch is there, and something.
Well, we're going to, that's.
Do they have to tell us?
The site plan, correct, well, we're going to, I don't know what's deeper, basically, we're going to have to work together to prove the same site plan, now, we're not going to have.
Right, otherwise, because if they're ordinance, they could, if it's not in the redevelopment plan.
We're going to do, yes, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to try to do, we're going to have a joint engineering review, a joint planner review, so all those issues are brought to both bodies at the same time, so what we're not going to do is review independently, and then recommend to each body, we agreed already that we'll sit down with planners and engineers, traffic and assault.
There's one side plan, one, one side.
There's, yeah, there's, well, there's one site plan recommendation, so when you receive your views coming from, we're going to agree on it, we're not going to have an engineer from Montclair, an engineer from Glen Ridge disputing what, you know, to review.
This is forever, or just, we just, we do the initial site plan?
This plan, this is.
But if they're, they're doing something, changing something down the road.
Then we're going, yeah, then we're doing it again together.
Yeah, just with his site plan, just specifically talking about the medical office building, and all the parking that's associated with it, we're going to review it together with Montclair, and report, you'll have the same report for it, go to Montclair, and then by the right boards.
Okay.
Probably ready to make our recommendation, I guess we need to.
Well, I think we're going to let, get some comment. We're going to get open, open to public comment, to new items, I ask you to limit yourself to two minutes, please, and also state your name.
Hi, Deborah Dine, Sixth Laurel Place, thank you, planning board, it's a lot of work, and I think you're doing a great job. Council suggested inserting a placeholder for traffic mitigation on Laurel Place, I don't see it in this version.
Yeah, I mean, we did discuss that, and my understanding is that that is, and will be part of the redevelopment agreement, that there's actually no language suggesting a placeholder, but that it would in fact be part of a traffic impact tweak, I spoke separately, we discussed this.
Outside of the plan area, it's not within the redevelopment plan's boundary area, but that goes to the off track issues.
Right.
And so, that is something that could be negotiated in the redeveloper agreement.
When would we do that?
It's not something we can really put in the plan, because it's outside of the plan area.
But it's, it's covered in the language that we just talked about.
That sentence, but?
Yes.
And then, when it goes to council?
They'll, they'll be within council's purpose.
They could then say, we would like a placeholder?
How does the traffic impact on Laurel get identified?
Through, because it's an intersection, it's an affected intersection.
This is, this is an issue that has to the council level, right now, we're going to perform another traffic study, and then including that with the analysis, so that was, when that was brought up, by the council.
Right, I remember before you talked a plan, you know, so I'm just not sure how it gets married.
Well, I think, I think what we're hearing is it's outside of this area, this redevelopment plan, but our town council is addressing.
Can do it when it goes to them, okay? And then, to keep within my two minutes, we do support the traffic study post build at one year, or when appropriate, that the hospital should mitigate at their sole cost. The only confusing thing to me is that we keep hearing that that traffic, that would be kind of pointless, because it won't show the point of origin with the other developments in the area, but right now, they're doing traffic studies that we are being told the hospital is not responsible for our traffic. How do you know the point of origin for the current traffic studies? But you won't know the point of origin post build.
Because I think, I think Laurel Place is different, being a minor road compared to Bay Avenue, which is an arterial road, and that's the one we were talking about both at the planning board meeting to Montclair here, is that those intersections, in Montclair specifically, we're talking about.
Harder to track.
Walnut Crescent and Claremont is one of the key, so that's where Montclair, traffic, we've been looking at, has been the one that's the most difficult to analyze, and that was, that was the key intersection that we were speaking to that evening.
Understood.
So I guess the traffic study that we were talking about at council, which is the origin and destination traffic study, that's separate in a part from, from the modeling and the traffic analysis that goes in with respect to the Walnut Crescent.
The big street, yeah. I understand.
One is the council issue, then there's the planning board issue with the site plan, so it's basically five separated, or whatever you're doing, the origin and destination study on Laurel Place, as well as additional traffic studies, so that's more or less under council's purview now, rather than the planning board.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Carmel Lachman, I live in Montclair, twenty-six Walnut Street, which is the corner of Walnut Street and Walnut Crescent, if you're looking at figure one. So I am like at a corner right from the, where the nursing school is at the moment, and where they plan to build the new medical office building, and I'm sure you're familiar with the area, there's huge trees there, I appreciate Mr. Robbie's comments about the trees. What I would hate to see is those forty foot trees being torn down in the interest of constructing this building. There is a citation, you were talking about ordinances here, in the plan on page forty-six that talks about ordinance number two eighty-one, and it says trees, well, there's no such ordinance.
Right.
That two eighty-one is strictly the site plan in general, there's nothing that addresses existing trees in that ordinance, so I.
Two eighty-one dash eight point two, landscaping and tree trees?
I'm looking at your, what I downloaded from the website of Glen Ridge Town.
It's Montclair ordinance, ma'am.
I know, and. And I'm, as I said, I'm from Montclair. I'm actually on the planning board, but I have to recuse myself because I live within two hundred feet of the site. And I'm just saying that this is incorrect citation is in this plan.
Right. So you need to update that. So it's a reference to two eighty-one dash eight point two, landscaping and tree, period.
Am I looking at, I downloaded this from your, remember the website?
Right, so this is information that we, you know, who's that's up to that?
As a public person, I'm not, I don't, I'm not aware of it. So does that address existing trees? There's a difference between existing trees and creating a buffer when you build something new. What I'm trying to determine is, well, is there something in here that protects the existing trees that are forty, fifty foot high, that blocks the view of the Roswell Terrace folks and myself and other people in Montclair from looking at any new medical office building?
I...
And I just want to make sure the citations are correct here.
Also, if we look at the Montclair ordinances, just to make sure, because that would definitely be intent.
That's intent, yeah.
Whatever protection ordinance you have.
But the, from reading it, it's not the way it stayed in the ordinance. So I just want to make people here aware that unless you go back and read the ordinance, you may not be understanding exactly what they mean.
What do you think it should say?
Well, I, what do I think it should say?
Well, the citation just says...
What do I think it should say?
I'm sorry, I will, I will think that's the reference, correct the citation.
I think it should say something, something to the effect that the developer shall make every effort to save existing trees. Special expenses shall be made to retain existing mature trees along Roswell Terrace and Walnut Crescent, and they should be maintained or replaced with trees of similar height and width.
I can tell you that the site plan committee of this board is very attuned to that.
Good.
So when we look at that, we will be very, very sensitive.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know that there was a separate sheet of paper that had another citation, but I do appreciate if you could look and read to make sure that addresses existing trees.
I will relook at it again.
And that they're replaced with mature trees of existing size and...
Well, I think that's the ordinance required.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Is that something the chair, we can have verified?
Yeah, I'd like to have it verified.
Michael, can we do that?
Because right now, because right now the language is, developer shall make every effort to save existing trees. Special expenses will be made to retain existing mature trees along Roswell Terrace and Walnut Crescent. You have particular cultural to start by to enable it. Is there anything you need, you might maybe add to that?
And then we referenced that any tree removal and planting shall be in accordance with the Montclair tree requirements. And I'll make sure that the reference is exactly right.
We'd like to know exactly what the ordinance is now, I think, because we're hearing that it doesn't replace in trees, replace sized trees.
Excuse me, if I could just to record that with request.
I just wanted to say something like, they shall be maintained or replaced with trees of similar height and width.
Okay.
I mean, you can't put a four-foot tree where you have a forty-foot tree.
No, agree.
Doesn't block...
Is that fine on the ordinance today? It's your request.
No, but you can actually, not like a fifty-foot tree.
Sure you can.
You can.
You just can't like...
I guess, that's not true, you can. I'm doing it in the back of the yard of a house in Manhattan, two hundred and six thousand dollars, but it's one tree, four feet tall, it's only thirty-six thousand dollars, so it's gonna be done. That's what I do for the...
It can get done.
Of course.
They do.
Yeah. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any other public comment?
I have a question first.
Sure.
And maybe this could, in the site plan, do we have the ability to prohibit the removal of a tree?
You have to follow your ordinance, whatever ordinance is on the book, and if the...
We don't have ordinance.
And the ordinance, we need to look at it, but most ordinances say has this, has language like, you shall, to the greatest degree possible, protect all specimen trees and highly valuable trees in trees of a certain diameter. No ordinance ever says you absolutely cannot take out a tree. But if you do, then there are these replacement requirements. If a tree has a diameter between six and twelve inches, you have to... You know, between twelve and twenty-four inches, you have to... I need to confirm again with the Montclair tree removal ordinance.
If we would sort of negotiate, if a tree had to come down, if we felt half value, we would have to, you know, negotiate with the developer.
If my question is, should the size of it have to come down? Generally, it's supposed to be a grading plan. A lot will deal with the grading plan to see, you know, if we can save the trees or not. Because I know, we make reference to it before in some of the plans, it's in the buffer, return to large buffer areas with the intent of saving trees.
To keep some of the largest trees, right?
Correct. So that was like, I think how Jessica was addressing, it's like looking at buffering areas and by having certain dimensions for the buffer areas who are going to retain mature trees. And that was one of the ways to accomplish that.
Not that, you know, as you know, like development, construction process itself, you know, can impact trees. Just because the development goes to a certain line doesn't mean that the construction process. So that's where this, we go above and beyond that and say, now we have to make every effort to protect these trees.
I think that the issue here is, and where you can't, you replace them with something big, you know?
Not, yeah, not...
It's not like a sapling put in the grass, so, and not knowing what the ordinance says.
We need to know, yeah.
If there's nothing in the ordinance, then it would be in accordance with the ordinance.
But if there's nothing in the ordinance, then we would want to headline it here, of the mature...
I don't, I'm just trying to do right now to verify, but if there isn't anything in the ordinance, and I believe that there was, that it had tree replacement requirements.
I think the Montclair ordinance requires either replacement or a contribution to a fund that we could...
Yeah, that doesn't help with property.
Well, then why don't we just say, either in accordance with the Montclair ordinance, or the developer shall be required to replace the tree with lifetime and size and diameter, whichever is stricter. So that way, in case Montclair's ordinance doesn't address it, we would have the language.
We don't know because it would be, any of the trees are probably within the buffer, and why not subject to remove?
I think there's another, I believe Montclair has another ordinance with trees on private property. There's a process to remove the trees, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor? And that may also be, should be referenced.
I will look that up. I haven't looked at that.
Because we were looking into that, and I think Montclair was one of the ones we were looking at as a model ordinance. When I talked about the shade tree earlier, that's one of the authorities we think give them, it was on private property, but for instance, I hope I can leave that.
Yeah, Montclair has a separate tree removal ordinance.
Maybe we should just cite tree removal, the tree removal ordinance, because that has specifically replacement requirements. I can vote. Yeah, but I'm not sure that's bound to address necessarily the concern that we're hearing. The replacement ordinance may not require a lifetime and size... I may be mistaken, but it requires approval to remove, you know? So it would be...
Right.
So, and there's conditions to approve to be removed. I've had to look at the ordinance for about five, six years, but the end is specific approval to remove.
Trying to get it. So what I'm hearing, either we want for replacement of lifetime and size, or the...
Or we remove the removal. Because I think it specifically requires approval for removal of a tree of a certain caliber or whatever, private property. Right, but we're, that's not so much the issue. The issue is what's going to happen if it gets removed? The thing is you have to give approval to remove it, to approve of addition. Oh, I think that's not why I'd handle that. I don't know, because, yes, we can.
Right.
May I just make a suggestion, that I believe that as strict as you make this clause, it will make the developer much more judicious in the removal of trees.
Right, that's why we're talking about it.
Well, that's right, that's why we're trying to accommodate that.
My question is, what we're doing...
I think that may, I think that may achieve a good one, too, and we could just refer to that Montclair ordinance. I'm not sure the body that determines that we consider it cycling, sorry. The cycling committee.
The Montclair ordinance requires a permit to remove any tree.
Permit from whom, though?
That's generally administered by the county of Arborist.
But what's the meaning?
Yeah, what's, excuse me, what's...
Well, and both, the Arborist, is that in the Arborist's sole discretion? I mean, what's... That's what we need to look, I forgot what, this process is, I know you'd be a permit for a tree.
Okay, may I, Mary, you have a question?
My question is procedurally, what we're doing here today, because if we're going to recommend this under council?
With, with conditions, right.
It sounds like what we're doing, because we're not going to get an answer.
No, we're not going to get an answer. So that's, they're going to look at that now, so we're going to try and recommend with conditions and get the conditions back, but that'll be the idea.
Because we don't really...
No, we're not going to have a final product. Sir?
Yes, Charles Stendell, I live on Roswell Terrace. There are really two issues involved with the trees on the site. The one issue is the buffer issue. Those trees, those trees are buffers. We have an issue which is slightly different. The hospital and the nursing school lawn have some valuable old trees, and I think we realize almost certainly in the site plan, they're going, some of them are have to go. But that's really, I think, more of a question of the site plan than the tree ordinance. I mean, we'd love to see them stay, but, you know, I think we recognize that might be practical.
Right. Thanks.
And those are on Glen Ridge property?
They're all Glen Ridge.
Yes, all Glen Ridge, yeah.
Excuse me, for the record, may I have your name and address, please, just for a minute?
Charles, your address.
Your name.
Name.
Charles Stendell.
Does he have this?
Thirteen Russell.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Comment for the board, or a motion?
I would move to recommend the plan as modified tonight with the conditions that we put on the record to discuss to town council.
And a second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion?
For Turian, on second, thank you.
So what are the conditions we're going to put in?
It's all on the record.
All on the record.
Well, I think there are two major issues. One is the trees, and we are not sure about the ordinance in Montclair. And the second issue was about the lead, that even though we think fifty points is okay, but we want to put a footnote, they're saying that the developer thinks they can only afford forty points.
Up to fifty.
And have the council make deals, which you do on everything. Actually, I'd like to rephrase that a little. I mean, I don't think I'm at least comfortable recommending fifty. I have no idea whether forty is appropriate or fifty.
Well, just to restate, it says up to fifty.
A minimum, minimum of forty, because the developer said that it would be a minimum of forty up to fifty, that council's discretion.
These are different levels. They start at forty, then they go up up to eleven.
I wouldn't want the council to think that we unanimously, unless we do, think that they, fifty is the right number.
Agreed.
That's up to them.
Agreed.
We just don't have the information.
Right, right. But they might say, oh, planning board wants fifty, so we'll...
It's okay.
That's right, it has to be specific in the wording and resolution, that's what you're trying to...
So Alan, you'll insert that.
I'll...
Right in here, that's the last.
Okay. And we also had the condition of the permitted uses in four point...
Four, four two.
Four, four two. Any other conditions?
One question, is this adopted by the Montclair board, or they're going to still review it?
They were deferring to us because of the question of uses on Lot B. That was a major issue. And Lot B, where we...
The section four point two two.
Four point two, with two different, that was, I figured, that was the issue they were waiting to, to us with our policy decision, because they had to agree to adopt whatever we adopt. They don't...
So whatever is adopted today, they, they would be okay with it?
Yes, they would look like, in theory.
That is what, that is what we believe.
In theory.
Or it will come back to us with some change?
No, it will come back to the council, because we don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan. We could have got different recommendations, the plan, that should be the same, as the doctor, like...
Right, so then, then the two councils will have to get everything squared away.
Work it out, that's, that's fine, I think. So if they have a nuance, if they have a little difference in their recommendation, that's for the councils to work out. We don't have to, at this point, perfectly, Mary, unlike at the site plan, standing where we're going to have to be totally agree with.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, or are we ready for a vote?
You want to hear the language? You wrote something?
Oh, I don't think he's ready for that.
I have to be able to write that tonight in a way that I'm comfortable with.
We'll consult with our notes. I have them all by page number, and...
Yeah, there's too many notes, I think, to read it all back.
There'll be a, there'll be a written resolution that will...
Yeah, we'll vote on a written resolution, and we'll all have a chance to read over.
Just wondering if we do that?
Our next meeting.
Does that affect the timeline that we've been asked to? Well, we may want to do, I don't think there's any other business pending before this board until, of course, we have a site plan. Maybe if we went ahead and made a fire to June thirteenth council meeting, so that we could formally recommend it to the council.
Sure.
So the, June thirteenth would be a, that's council meeting. Actually, this is three weeks, because we have an extra week.
Is there any procedure for us to do that without meeting in person?
We could do it, well, some people, we could do it, we could take your vote telephonically. That is allowed.
If all of this is reading the resolution, making sure the wording is acceptable?
I would like to have some members here, but if people, we could reach out telephonically, because that is...
When do you propose we...
Whatever, it's up to the board. Do you want me to send out? What I could do, I'll just email everyone to see what a date may be.
Okay.
It may come maybe to Wednesday prior to the council meeting.
I have a conflict that day.
Maybe two Wednesdays, one for depression on Alan.
That's next Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's next Wednesday.
But we, the other option was either to do it by email or...
We can't do it by email, but if we call a meeting here, we have some, we should be